Good, how are you doing? I am working with Colby's girlfriend.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Regan.
My girlfriend.
She is. I do the community block section with the classwork.
Yeah.
Nice having you there.
It is 6:30, I'll call a meeting to order. Agenda additions and deletions. I would just note that number 17, we are going to have an executive session. The subject will be personnel. Minutes and pay orders. The minutes for 5/16/22. Need a motion, a second to discuss.
I make a motion to discuss.
Do we have anything that needs to be amended, changed, altered? Hearing none, I'll move the question on in favor of the minutes. May 16th, say aye.
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 And I'm abstaining because I wasn't there.
Pay orders for June 7th. Currently showing $58,887.81. We have a motion, a second to open them for discussion.
I make a motion.
A second. Anything that looks strange, needs to be gone over, altered, added, deleted?
I have a question concerning the $1,660 that was spent for baseball field clay. Based on the town purchasing policy, that should have come before the select board for approval, before it was ever spent. The other concern is that it's being charged to recreation maintenance budget, which is already over budget, so.
Do we know if the work was done before or after the select, the recreation committee was really doing things?
Sam, no.
No.
Who's after? Okay.
Is there anything you can answer, Sam?
I think Jordan just...
Yes. Then somebody had to be involved. Brian was handling the ball field and the clay and all of the contractor work around that.
Well, based on the purchasing policy, it should have come before the select board first.
Okay.
What's the, what's the amount that usually we have a cutoff of, just so that they know for the future? A thousand?
$1,500.
$1,500.
But then it's $1,360.
Yeah, but it was another $300 to get it delivered.
Okay.
Okay.
Seems pretty expensive.
Okay.
It was in the minutes of the recreation committee. I don't know how, I believe it was litigiously handled.
I kind of thought that it was money in the baseball league that was going to be used for maintenance in the field, too. Are we, maybe we're going to see a reimbursement on that? Does anyone know?
I think he's working something like $1,200, $1,300 or something.
Okay. So a possible reimbursement of $1,300?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's something like $1,300. That's what it's supposed to come from, baseball.
I noticed a pile down there. Is that something volunteers are going to take care of?
Brian has been handling most of the baseball field. I think we're looking for either volunteers or somebody to move it around. We haven't come to any agreement on that, so let's see.
Okay, I was kind of wondering, since it sits there too long, you're going to have a heap of solid fire.
Yeah. Is that something that could maybe be pursued on front porch form or something? A call for...
Potentially.
Okay.
We'll check, I'll touch base with Brian to see if he has any further plans on that.
Thank you.
With that noted, do I have a motion, a second to accept?
I make motion to accept the...
A second.
Second.
All say we say aye.
Maybe, just since everybody on the rec committee is new, maybe they're not aware of all the policies.
Yeah.
And it's to go this way.
Right.
And that may be some sort of official policies and procedures that need to go out to them.
I'm wondering, is that, that would be part of the bylaws, wouldn't it? Our spending policy? If it's part of our bylaws, then by reading out the...
Have they been given them and read them?
I don't know.
Have you gotten far enough?
Or not, but...
I think the confusion comes up with the additional delivery fee, because that took itself, because I knew about the $1,500.
But that is part of the fee. You can't buy something without it. To get it here, you need the delivery fee, and that's all should be calculated.
I think that's where we ordered it, because that's...
Just something to keep in mind, please.
Yeah.
To the honorable mention portion, John McCollum for putting up the American flag from the village. Sure everybody's aware of those. To Bill Osen for turning on the water to Elfin Lake Concession Stand and also activating the water down here in the Roy and the Boo Fountain. Bruce here assists with the new raft over at the lake. We still have to get rid of the old one, but... And Emily and Jason Keisner for volunteer to clean the Elfin Lake Concession Stand before it opens for the season that's coming up, too.
I just want to say that I've been up to the lake recently. The lake looks beautiful, the new world looks beautiful. I'm very excited about the raft. Bruce, what is the top to that raft?
It's at the town garage.
Oh, that town garage. It looks pretty nice, so...
Thank you for doing that.
Did you folks rake the beach?
We did. We backfilled all the, and we raked it all out.
Wow. Amazing.
It only took a couple hours. We had a few volunteers, yeah, picking the tables out.
Yeah, it looks great up there.
And the rain cutters, real rain cutters.
Yes.
The Rowland County Sheriff's contract, I have a copy of it here. Basically, we've been with the sheriff now a real long time. This year it's for 20, 20 hours a week. It's about $46,000, that's what we budgeted for it. We do have to sign the contract. Is there anything you'd like to say here, Dave?
No, we arranged the hours as requested. The hours, I'm not sure how they're going to figure out, I don't know what you're looking for as far as days of the week, but with the 20 hours, it's, it could be five, four hours just per week to try to maximize the amount of days to be in town. Or we could make it different, two, 10-hour days, or however you want to break it up for your coverages. You can get back to me if you want to change something up, or if you guys get together and make a decision on how you want it to look.
I did notice one clause in here about one deputy working the contract. I think that's been one of our board's contentions in the past. If there's one guy working it, the staff at Kumbi, the people in town can get to know that one deputy. When we see three, four different ones during the course of the week, nobody gets, you know, nobody gets out of the car and really talks to anybody.
Yeah, the primary, the way it was set up originally, of course, with the Clarence Waller contract, were run on the same days. So in order to cover the hours, we had two assigned here. I've got one of the two that was assigned here, it's been out on long-term medical, and it's still out. I'm hoping she's come back in the fall. But it was primarily Andrew Cross and Avery Schneider were the two that were assigned to the two towns. So we've been using enough, whoever was available to fill in her portion while she's been out. She's, she went out like last November, so it's, it's been some time. So she's hoping to be back in a couple months. She had hip surgery and they had to do a bunch of stuff, but that's, that's the goal with the, you know, the amount of hours between the two towns, to cover with two people.
Does anybody have anything they'd like to add, or what? I have a question. I need a motion, a second, whether...
Ed has a question.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
If I may, I'm assuming it's from the church department?
Yes.
Okay. Do you patrol only at night time?
Only at night, no hours, every 10 hours.
You're in the daytime?
Yes.
Okay. There's one issue that we have in, on North Main Street and Nash Drive. I think it was a few years ago that we brought up the issue there, and they made a section of North Main Street on the Nash Drive side, no parking, but just basically in front of a couple of farms.
Right.
And this is being violated regularly. As a matter of fact, Red Rogers comes down and talks to the people, asking them to move, and response he's getting, it, most of the companies will do something about, but the individuals, one person in particular, don't know who it is, and his wife, they come there about noon time, and they'll sit there and flip the bird and rent his wife and just become a nuisance, basically. I've spoken with one of the sheriff's deputies about it, but I saw, since you guys were talking about the sheriffs, I bring that up. I mean, this is posted, no parking there, you know, so it's...
It's a real safety hazard. I mean, you cannot come out of that street if somebody's parked there. Somebody they cannot see.
Especially a truck and trailer.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, I came down there one day and the truck and trailer driver was there, and I got up in the crowd, and I said, "You're going to have to help me get out of here." I can't see that street. It's a real safe, because you're not only watching north and south on Route 7, you're watching coming up Maple Street, you're watching in and out of Cumberland, because...
I agree. It's very difficult to see coming off that street.
And you can see how it's highlighted. I mean, there're green, there're tracks out into the mud. Red Rogers used to try to mow some lawn there, they've gone way into the grass, so there's no question that people are tacking their own lawn, so...
There is, there is one issue that I ran into, and I actually, I stopped to talk to the, it was Vermont Transit. They, that's on their roof as a stop, so they pull off to the side there. And I spoke to the driver, and I said, "You're going to have to do something about getting your stop location changed." And of course, probably talking to the driver wasn't going to make any headway for me, anyway, so I don't know if the town could make a call to Vermont Transit, because that is one of their stops on the roof, is to pick up a couple of farms.
And to do it for the bus, too.
Yeah, and the bus also.
Yeah.
So they pull off on that, on that side. I ran the Vermont Transit guy out of there, and told them that they couldn't be there, but I don't know if they've been there since, because maybe I haven't seen them, but that, he did tell me that is one of their stops.
I think it would make more sense for them to have a stop where there's a sidewalk on the other side. There's no sidewalk over on the Nash Drive side, so it doesn't really make sense for the bus to be stopping there. It would make more sense to move the stop to where there are sidewalks and buses.
Yeah, and where you have some visibility away from the street where they were, people were coming off of.
Which I think the closest location to Cumberland Farms is Meacham Street, down by where the church is.
So you, you may get more benefit calling than, than I did, but it's, and I don't know who to contact at the bus as far as, I didn't realize they had a stop there as well, but...
I wonder if that would come into a bit of friction with the church, just because a lot of people park there on Sundays?
I don't know.
Because if that's, if it has to be a bus stop, it should be a designated bus stop and not be occupied, otherwise they're just going to go right back to it.
I'm just giving a, a different suggestion. The other thing is, I think it's already stopped by law for that. Maybe they just stick with that one stop.
Oh, they stopped there as well?
I'm not sure. I mean, I know the bus stops there.
Yeah, the bus definitely stops there.
Yeah, I think Vermont Transit just has the one stop in town.
It seems like it's...
Oh, the train line, the big, big, big.
Yeah, the big, the big bus.
Yeah, that is, that is just...
That's, that's not a good location.
Yeah.
And that's also tough, because it's a huge bus, and it's, it needs a lot of...
Needs a lot of, it might be more room at that one, and then it's property.
But then, but then a lot of people park there, too.
Yeah. Good question.
But maybe it might be worth it to reach out and ask to say, like, is there a possibility we can move it, or is there some better way we can do this?
Yeah. But that's a very dangerous location, we've got to be careful.
I'll second you, Ed, it's not a problem.
Right. We still do need a motion and a second as to whether we sign up on the contract.
I'll make a motion to accept the sheriff's contract as presented.
A second.
All in favor of signing? Say aye. 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 Any call? We'll sign on it.
Okay. Let me know, I can swing by and pick it up at your place, or whatever you want me to do.
The area there that they're referring to, one of the three signs has been removed, one right at the intersection. I've asked Steve Backyard, road foreman, we have signs that are dropped, just ask him to replace it. So I'm sure that'll be in there in the next couple of days.
And I'll make sure my guys get some time down there, throw some people out, write some tickets.
I, I do note that one of the deputies mentioned to me that they haven't been writing any of the tickets for that area. It is something we'd like to patrol. My thought on it is that it's not a parking violation there. We have it in our ordinances, it makes a traffic ordinance, it's a two-point violation, and I think it's $220.
Yeah, I've got your ordinances at the office, if that's in there.
If not, I'll make sure you get a copy of that.
Okay.
But, you know, I think if a couple of those get written, you know, $220 for parking there, that's a pretty good runoff.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Oh, Steve, Phil.
I guess Ed, Trudy are up first with us, by the looks.
We can do that, yeah.
What we came here tonight for was to talk about our driveways again. This time, I think, hopefully, we've solved the problem of being washed out. And I'm going to picture here, what we did is we had all the driveways paved.
I think probably if you give that to Phil, and make sure he can...
I have on my phone, I have pictures of four, and one we had to get rid of.
So do they leave a lip high enough so the water can't chase in your driveway?
Yeah, well...
I'll, I'll coin that to you in a minute here.
Yep, we also want to thank you for all the attempts that you've made every time we've called with a problem. You've been there to help, but unfortunately, they're just Band-Aids and temporary solutions, and every time we get a hard rain, it goes out again, or it did. What, yeah, it's pulling out now is, in March, I freaked out because it flooded and it washed out the whole plot where my vegetable garden is, it was just gone. Nothing had been planted, luckily, in March, but we still had the runoff coming from the melting snow, which comes right down the middle of the road in our driveway. So I called and came up, Lori was there, she saw what had happened, and put in gravel, which lasted until mid...
They put in...
...infall, when we had a hard rain and it washed out again, so it was just, we called, took pictures.
Well, all the way up through here...
I know, I'm aware of what you're talking about. You can probably see I drive up through here.
He quoted that, and he said, "What's going to happen is we don't put a berm in all the way up through." He said, "It's going to come down, it's going to undermine, it's going to go over, it's going to wash it out." You know, so, so what we did was here, he's got the grade, so it keeps the water, when it gets down to the bottom edge of this driveway, he put a berm in along the slide, so the water runs back down into the yard.
Yeah.
We can see it better, right? But what we got, and that we put the driveways in, which is pretty expensive, he said it would be an extra cost of $1,200 to put that berm in from the top driveway down to the bottom. And what we noticed, and I wish I had pictures of it, the show footage, the edge of the road where the water had been washing down was undermining the road, the street, and some of the basketball had been washed away as well. And it was, you know, it was making a ditch right down through. So, you know, I said to the guy, you know, and he said, "If we don't put the berm in, then it's going to just wash out the bottom driveway and then you at least the end of it." So I said, "Let's do it." But I was wondering, since it was part of the town's street that was being deteriorated from it, if the town could possibly help us with these kinds of that, if reimbursement paid for about half of that, be $600. You know, I feel that's fair, you know, in that part of that was actually the town's property.
Yeah, plus it's a town problem, and the water, I wish people could be up there in a hard rain. It looks like a river coming down through that street, it's just a torrent of water coming down through. And until we put this in, then all of it comes out of there.
We've had, we've had...
And it is a town drainage problem. It's not, wasn't our problem, except it ended up being our problem, because it took the driveway every time we got a hard rain.
Right. Now, we've had a couple of persistent rains afterwards, after we put the pavement in, and we've noticed how the way the berm's upset, the water will run down, and when it gets down to the bottom of the driveway, the water kind of splits, and that's why he put a berm going across into our driveway, and then coming, coming back down into the gravel where we parked our RV and the boat. But it's diverting the water back, the rest of it goes down past the driveway, and then starts going into the yards. And of course, we were concerned about deterioration from our neighbors' driveway, but we checked out, and there's no problem there. The water seems to be able, has enough law to come back down into the yards.
Past my yarders. Sounds like a replacement yard.
So we, we were just feeling that, since we went ahead and done this, you know, obviously, I mean, I understand, you can say, "Well, you did that on your own," but I just feel, to be fair, it was part of, part of the town road, and, you know, reimbursed by the half of that $1,200 would be appreciated, but again...
And it really wasn't an option. We really had no choice, because he said, "The end of this driveway is just a accessory, just like the main street is, it's just going to take it out." And I mean, we had no choice, really, because we were basically taking care of the rain runoff problems that people have tried to fix, you know?
You would have had a problem with the street eventually, would it deteriorate, be washed away. So anyway, that's a consideration, if you guys think about that.
Do you have any precedents for assisting in projects for, that are kind of that weird, quasi-personal, private property and town property, like one we've actually acted upon?
Never been done in my time on the board, but I don't know what kind of the board is just...
Yeah.
Well, can you think of any?
No. 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 I can't remember anybody ever being reimbursed for their, you know, it's like Irene, or, you know, Mother Nature's just not normal anymore.
No, it's a town drainage problem, and you know it's been a problem, and you've tried to fix it. And now, hopefully, we went the extra mile and paid to have it fixed, so we won't be calling you again, but it's all stuff that you've tried to do in the past, and we appreciate that, but it was always just temporary Band-Aid stuff. So we actually went the extra mile and spent the extra money to solve the problem, to take care of the poor drainage, to keep it from taking out our maintenance. So I feel we're kind of helping the town out, we won't be calling you again, and you put in some small berms up there, and I don't know how many times we've been up to put gravel there, and it just washed out, so, I mean, we're, in the end, saving you an expense and people running up there to patch it up every time it washed it out, so. And I don't feel we're being reimbursed for our private driveway. It's stuff that we had to do to preserve the driveway that we paid for, that we're not asking a penny for that, it's just the extra money that we had to tack on to preserve the driveway that we put up.
To put a berm between the two driveways.
Because there was no guarantee, it wasn't going to just take out the end of the driveway like it was taking out the street. And I mean, Nelson, if you've been up there, you know it's a problem, we're not exaggerating it, the way the runoff comes down there.
I realize you've got the problem. I don't know how the board could go without doing any reimbursement. I don't know how the board could go without doing any reimbursement when we weren't brought into the solution to what proved to be effective.
Well, what you've done in the past has been effective temporarily, but we're just putting in, I mean, we've had no choice.
I know, but when you arrived at your decision to do this, you didn't come to us. We didn't budget for it.
The guy was sitting there with our payment. We had to do something and the more he looked at it, he said, "I can't guarantee that it's a town issue is gonna take out the end of our driveway if we don't do this, so."
Yeah, we, our intention was just to paint the driveways, you know, but, um, it was what, actually, the day before they arrived there, we had pictures of it. I don't, can't pull them off on my phone, but, uh, we had a heavy, heavy rain that night before. And right there where the town had put the gravel on the upper side of our bottom driveway.
About three weeks before.
Yeah, it washed that right out. And it dumped all the gravel right in and it was washing out the end of the driveway again. And so we left it there to show the paying company that. And after he got done with the two driveways and he was, you know, we'd asked him if he could address that problem. And yeah, he said, "We could put a berm back ways." But then he kept looking at it. He said, "If we don't connect the two driveways together, then it just gotta come down and wash out the bottom driveway and it's gonna undermine the pavement and wash it out," you know, so.
We didn't do it to be pretty, to make it look pretty. I mean, we did it to...
Which is why we didn't say anything to the town because that wasn't part of our plan at its beginning, you know, so.
I'm not sure how the rest of the board feels here. I honestly can't recall that's ever, you know, a solution being... It's obviously seeming, seemingly a work. But I, anything we do here is going to be setting a basic precedent. And the next time anything like this happens, a citizen of the town is just gonna go ahead and do what they think will fix the problem. And that's not why we're here. Does anybody on the board have anything to say either?
I kind of, I kind of agree with Nelson in this case just because as much as it might be a problem that we've been dealing with for many years, if, and I know it might, it's always that tough thing when you have somebody that are doing the work and then they say, "This is a solution, let's do it right now." It's just tough when, if you want to have the help of the town, to not have that conversation beforehand. Because then maybe we could have, if it was a possibility, maybe then we could have helped out in the situation and brought the cost down. Or, but just it's, because it's after the fact, it makes it, it makes it difficult for me to say, "Okay, yeah, this is right." It's just like Nelson said, that could be a very, it could set a really troubling precedent that we'd have to deal with quite a few times. It's unfortunate that that's the way it goes and that's how things go.
Well, it's unfortunate that we have to pay for something that the town could have and should have done years ago and then didn't. And we end up paying for it. I mean, it's not like it's a new problem that all of a sudden we said, "Oh, let's make it pretty and let's..." No, you know, we've been here I don't know how many times with this.
At the time when, at the time when the town actually...
It's been a problem for a long time. I think Ed said it himself that you went ahead and did it without letting us know.
We didn't have any choice.
You know, had you come to us, uh, I don't know what the board would have said.
I guess what Trudy trying to say is that at the time when you guys came out and put a berm on at the edge of each of our driveways, if you guys would have tied it together at that point in time, then we wouldn't have had the problem now.
And you knew it was a problem after that. It was just one Band-Aid after another or somebody come up and dunks some gravel in and we watch it wash away. And it's not like it's a problem that we just invented and said, "Okay, now we've solved it, now we wanna pay for it." That's not it. It's, this has been an ongoing problem that we tried to solve for us and for you guys.
At the point, at the time, just a minute Nelson. At the point of the time when we had the driveways done, okay? We have no clue what the solution is, you know? I mean, you know, we're not knowledgeable about, you know, paving and, you know, what it does. And, I mean, we wouldn't, we hadn't a clue until we talked to the painter himself.
Well, because he saw the damage that had been done the day before.
I still don't think you're getting the point that, well, the board is trying to make it. It is a public highway. It's a, the public wasn't involved in making this decision. You made this decision.
The public has been involved for three years, knowing that it was a problem.
How many years you lived there?
Thirty, somewhere.
And you're saying that's in the last three years?
No, we, we've been there for a long time. We've had problems right from that week.
We did there about nineteen seventy-one. We've had problems with the driveway for quite a long time.
No, but the biggest problem arose when the top part of that drive was repaved. It wasn't found so that the water went in the ditches.
Right, and you guys saw that.
And it comes right down just like a river. That's when the big problem started.
Right.
Was, I mean, we always had some runoff and then they put the storm drains in out back. But then when it was repaved, it's not found at all. It's just, it's a flat riverbed and it just comes down and you've seen the results of what happened, so.
And you guys saw that when he came up and ordered the, you know, repave and clear the ditches out on either side, which wasn't done on a regular basis, you know, so. I mean, we, of course, after we, we actually put gravel in and leveled off the area where we put our RV in the boat and that was all built up, that's what really became a problem. You know, started washing that out all the time, you know, and that's when we started talking to the town. So, you know, but anyway, that's all we're asking the town to do. If you can do it, fine, we're done with that, you know?
Well, the good thing is hopefully it won't be bothering you anymore. That ought to be over something too, I hope.
But, I mean, you could think about it.
Oh, they've already decided.
You can think about it if you want to, make it to state the next meeting or whatever. I don't, you know, I don't know, so.
What sort of issue?
I'm sympathetic to the problem they had, but at the same time, if we reimburse it, we're setting a precedent that every time that somebody in town has a problem with their driveway getting washed out, they want to expect the town to pay for it.
No, that's not what we're saying at all. We're saying, when people have problems with their driveways, you can try to come and help us, but it never worked, whatever you guys do.
And that was the, on a case by case, but, you know.
For me, if you, once you got that bid from the paving company came here, once they explained what needed to be done, then maybe we could have got explained and then got an explanation from that company and compared it to, you know, because it's not like...
Unfortunately, we can't fit into it every two week schedule. When people are doing work, it has to be done, so, whatever. All right, well, thanks for your time. All right, could we have our picture?
Oh, yes.
All right, yep. Ms. Diaz?
There's some more pictures there. Okay.
Somebody else has a lot of problem, I'm telling my paper the problem I'm taking.
Hi, sounds as though I've got a similar problem. The foot of, the foot of my driveway has a catch basin. Of course, I live on the state roof. And the snowplows, of course, in the winter push snow and gravel, or snow and sand. You know, I'm at the foot of a five mile grade and I don't have a driveway above me. So it winds up to be quite a load. And it plugs up the, their storm drain. Well, I have a lot of water coming off the hill behind my house. And I've actually spent a fair amount of money trying to straighten that out. When we moved there forty years ago, there was a wreck of an old garage there. I don't know if you remember, Phil.
Yep.
And the state used to have to send out a truck full of salt and somebody with a jackhammer because the whole road would flood. And, you know, the water just doesn't run down like that or into another storm drain when it's zero, you know? It puddles up and covers the whole road. So the state, I have contacted them and I've written them a couple of times and they seem to deny that, they say that storm drain must have been put in by a previous owner. And that that isn't even on their inventory. Well, to get back years ago, the state used to come out every sprint and just pop the top on that thing. And then they have these big shovels, that's to say the shovels are ordinary, but the handles are about nine feet long. And they dig out a wheelbarrow full of sand and everything was fine. But now, now the thing, I don't know how deep it is with sand. I mean, I doubt it was that big of a deal, but they, a couple of years ago and then maybe five years earlier, they had A1 sewer drain come out with this kind of a pump suction truck or something and pump the whole thing out. And, and apparently that must have cost them a few bucks, you know? So the guy doesn't want to bust his budget, but I, I mean, I don't see how that thing can be anything but a state issue. You know, the road is thirty feet wide, thirty-two feet wide there and this thing is sixteen feet from the center line. I mean, it's, it's part of the deal. And I've got a letter here, you know, the guy that I write to or the people that I was referred to at some level, a guy's name, you know this fellow, Fails or something? Robert Faley?
No.
Well, he just calls the person from the Clarendon garage.
I need to talk to Brad Keith.
Brad Keith?
Yeah.
Okay, I was hoping that maybe somebody from the town could advocate for me on this because it's gonna be a big mess. You have school buses and every other damn thing on this road, you know? And if it's gonna be covered with glare ice, that's a, of course, it's not gonna happen anytime soon. But Brad Keith is, he's where?
He's at Clarendon Forum.
Oh, all right. Well, he's the guy that's been telling this guy Faley that it's my business and that he's got no...
It's tied into their state storm drain.
Well, it is their state storm drain is what I'm talking about.
Well, connects to it and has to rain through there.
I checked with my project manager and the garage supervisor. This DI is not part of our state inventory of drainage structures. It is a private structure that only has a very small outlet, one and a half inches. I imagine a highway engineer would connect a storm drain to the, with an inch and a half height, same as he is in his bathroom. Anyway, I don't think the water will be a problem this time of year, other than a mosquito breeding ground, but next winter could pose a nice concern. The only other solution I can see is to fill in the area so that water doesn't pond and just runs down the side of the road, so, you know?
But then with the water, because I, I live across the street from Bert, as is Kathy.
I live right across the street.
Well, I'm well represented here.
Because like knowing what he's done even just this past winter for all the water runoff that's coming out of the hill itself behind the house, that's feeding into this one. I don't know when that was put together.
Well, I put that together not too long ago. But the point is that I can't do much with that water, you know, except run it into a drain. I've got no, I've got nothing else to do with it. And all they need to do is take the sand out of the thing and we'll be back in business again. And it's never done this before, for all that's to say, it's done it before and they pumped it out. But I just want the town or somebody to bring that to their attention that, you know, it certainly is their storm drain and if it's plugged up and it forms a pond like that, it's gonna be a big issue for them, more than anybody else probably. Or some poor guy that, you know, gets in a wreck over it.
Will he as a board draft water to... You were calling him, right?
Mr. Faley is above Brian Sanderson's letter, so I can send a letter to the Blackboard to...
Nelson could sign that on your behalf, Mr. Faley.
Well, that would be very helpful, I think.
Can I add to this conversation? The storm drains in front of Serenity House, the one directly in front of Serenity House and just above it are both full as well.
That's a spring.
Well, the spring, but it's like...
That needs to be dug back up.
Right, no, the storm drain right in front of Serenity House.
Yeah.
That's the spring.
No, the spring is what's boiling out of the road crack up there.
No, that, yeah, that's a different story. Every time it rains, it comes down across the Serenity House driveway and then across my driveway.
Yeah.
And it's not, the storm drain itself is completely plugged over. The one you hit every time you go up the road.
Yeah, I know. But it's, there's gotta be water running through that.
It's not.
Off the top of the hill.
It's coming right across the front of the Serenity driveway.
Yeah.
And then washing out the front of mine, which I patched back in.
There's two storm drains there. Since that corridor that comes down through from the big spring runs down that side of the road. Because when they dug the other side of the road, that would be, put the new water main in. And that's what caused that water main coming up in. And they hit an old water leak in there and it never got capped. And they dug that, that's that water issue.
That, that, yeah, that's...
That should be, have running water in it. If it's plugged, yeah, it needs to be cleaned.
Yeah, needs to be cleaned out.
Yeah, definitely.
So, if that's on the same...
Well, that, that would be a town problem.
That's a town issue.
So maybe that can just be checked out, see if it's all plugged up or not.
And then it comes out on a stream that goes through my front yard. But the actual drain cap is full. So it's running under, it's running underneath. It's running under the ground. Water can't get in during a rainstorm. Phil, can you call A1? Is there supposed to be cleaning all the drains?
I can call him. Do you want me to schedule him to do that? Okay. I will call. I'm trying to get Bert the answer here. What I'm testing.
Well, I know Nick, but I don't intend to pay for it. Well, I mean, once the precedent is set that I'm responsible for the highway.
Phil, is this, is this storm drain in one of the ones, twenty-one, that A1 would have cleaned out anyways?
No, no, it's state. No, not Church Street.
Church Street is one forty.
One forty is.
Oh, I know, I'm just saying.
Church Street in front of Serenity House is. There's actually, I think, two there, two or three, one down on the corner by the church.
There's one up above Serenity where that rental property is. And then there's one right in front of Serenity by the Serenity sign.
Maybe in our letter too, we could conclude the fact that the state has cleaned this drain multiple times in the past.
Yes.
Whether it's on their inventory or not.
Yes.
Well, yeah, they used to come out with a, with a truck and these guys with shovels and the whole thing took about fifteen minutes. But now they wait five years until it's really jammed full. And then they have Nick Rudennis come out. And I don't know what that cost, but it can't be cheap. Well, that's the deal. Well, thank you very much.
Hang on, Bert, I'm getting some answers.
Really?
Yeah. I'm just an awful slow texter. I'm just an awful slow texter. I have four thumbs, another one. First answer back was, yes, we can click back and get. The second one was, there's no outlet, it's just a concrete box. Well, there's another one that's full too, you can laugh about that. What did I get?
Well, it obviously isn't just, he, that was the first letter I got back from this guy, "It's just a concrete box." I mean, it must be a magical box because about twenty gallons of water a day goes in with it and it never fills up.
I, I can say as, as, as a daily observer from, from across the street, the road over by Bert's house is wet every single day and it has not been like that before. Every single day.
I noticed it just toward the end of winter, it started popping.
Yeah, we had a big rainstorm back in the, the end of March or something and, and in fact, the one down the hill, there's, there's another one plugged up on our side of the street down by the corner of Prospect. No, that, oh, that one is something else. That one connects to a bunch of stuff up in Hillside, but the one down nearby, well, between Hillside and, and Prospect Street is also full of sand, but they don't have any water going in with it, so I guess it's irrelevant.
He, he's going to look at it.
Excellent, well, that is great. You're talking to, what's his name, Keith?
No, somebody else.
Oh, cool.
Same apartment though.
Yeah. Well, nobody apparently has come out to see it, or at least nobody bothered to tell me they were going to go see it. I haven't seen anybody there and I've been complaining about this since about working in the March, like you said.
I'll be at the door if I want to go up there and look at it, so.
Yeah, good. Yeah, that would be terrific. But it won't be tomorrow morning.
Oh, no. They're all, they're all in Pittsburgh working the whole night, the whole week, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'll have to see if I can schedule them sometime. Very.
I'd appreciate it if you let me know.
I will.
Thanks very much. So, thank you very much.
Moving on to paving.
Thanks very much.
Thanks, Bert.
Thanks, Bert.
Phil, I believe you had a meeting with these people?
Yeah, Pike, Fuller and Will Show.
This is Will.
They actually got, figured they'd get more done this year than I expected. Quite surprised at the cost of stuff.
Okay, these are the insurance and identification numbers and the bid sheet. Paving unit price is ninety-six, shoulder gravel is thirty. They're estimating three hundred and twenty ton and shoulder is a hundred ton.
There's no shoulder gravel, I told them they weren't going to do that.
Are you showing from prime price, thirty-three, seven, twenty, oh, eight?
But he tied that into his whole price, didn't he, Nelson?
That's the whole price for the...
Because that was mentioned, he must not hurt me, it was mentioned that if any shoulder work on the driveways were needed to be done for April, the town would do that.
Do you all look at this though?
Let's open them all up, but I think we're going to have to have him change that or something, I don't know, how you can do that? But he has a price per ton on just the paving.
Yeah, the price per ton, I think, was ninety-seven.
Like, that'll answer the question. No, there's no gravel.
This is Will paving. Unit price for paving is one twenty-two. He's got a shoulder gravel of eighty a ton, four hundred and eighty-five ton of paving and sixty ton of shoulder. Combined total is sixty-three, nine seventy.
He called me, he asked me about it, I said, "No, there's no shoulder gravel."
No.
Called, verified that there's no shoulder.
Pike is a hundred and thirty-four on paving, four hundred and seventy-four ton. Shoulder gravel, he gave you forty-five, eighty tons and the total on that is sixty-seven, one sixteen. And they have a note on here that the price is based on liquid asphalt posting at seven seventy-nine. And prices will change depending on the asphalt posting at the time of the project.
Can you go back to Fuller's bid? Didn't you say Fuller came in around thirty-three? Or am I hearing?
That's what I heard. Yeah.
Thirty-three, seven, something.
Thirty-three, seven, twenty.
Did they get on just taffed and taffed in Florence and Shed?
Excuse me?
Were they getting on just taffed or taffed?
No, it's supposed to be taffed here as Florence Avenue and Shed Place.
And that's full?
That's why the amounts are almost identical for Fuller or Pike and Will and they're way off on Fuller.
Yes.
That's what he happened one year ago.
So he probably didn't.
Yeah, he probably didn't do all of it.
He went to all three, he stood right there with us.
Pike does mention on here the three streets and breaks down the tonnage on the three.
Okay, now, the other...
You want to take a look at these?
No, does Fuller say that?
Yeah, what does Fuller say?
Because he's, his tonnage is off by one hundred...
Yes.
Something tons, hundred and forty-five tons?
His unit price is ninety-six, estimate of three hundred and twenty ton.
Then everybody else was like four fifty, I think.
Four eighty-five and four seven, forty tons.
Four eighty-five, four seven, it's a hundred and fifty tons on, how can that be? Does he say he's going to pave all three streets?
No, it's just got the unit price and...
I think we need to go back and have him reclassify his quote saying he is going to pay because it was an inch, three-quarter shim with an inch and a quarter or inch and a half top, whatever it was. They all, so they all bid the same.
Yeah.
Maybe he's living out, leaving out Shed Place because I feel like it's not enough to just, just be on taffed for that amount, right?
No, that's the worst. It's too much for taff terrace and not enough for... He, that should be like taff terrace at Florence.
Right.
Because his total only came out to what, three, thirty-three thousand?
Yes.
And then do we want the other bids that had the side gravel to be also redone?
Yeah.
Was Will saying that they had side gravel?
Okay. So, yeah, so we do the three bids.
And does Will say all three streets must be to be within fifty tons?
Will doesn't break it down either.
We have to have it clarified again. It is all three streets, delete their gravel tonnage, they don't need that in there. Shoulder mix, shoulder tonnage, whatever they want to call it.
If he's going to talk to Fuller, why don't we just put this off to the next one? Good luck.
Yeah.
So, Phil, update.
So I was able to talk with Stan. He's not back yet. We weren't able to meet in person. He's still stuck in Virginia. He's got car issues and is still, still in Virginia, but I did get some good information from Stan. So Stan, right now, he's not certified as an engineer or architect anymore, so he can't draw up any drawings for us, he's not certified. He did give us two options if we want to get something drawn off what we have existing for the San Shed and that would be MFB, MBF, which Jay White works for and Jay is certified.
Yep.
And so Jay could be contacted for drawing up the design and the other company is Otter Valley Engineering. They worked with Timoth on both the permitting that needed to happen for their project and also did the site work. So those, those are the two places that we can contact for work. We have with us, this from Clearspan, it's the hoop that, that Timoth used as their prefabricated structure. So this is another option and this quote here is only, it's for the hoop only. It's not including concrete or permits or any of the work that, pre-work that needs to be done in order to install the hoop. It's just for the hoop. And the contact information for Clearspan is on here on this estimate that Timoth had for, for their work. And then the other thing is I know that Anthony, I can't say his last name, Anthony F., he, he mentioned at the last meeting that he would be willing to draw up something that would be all new construction for us. I don't know what the board thinks, if you'd like to see all three proposals, have something from, say, Otter Valley or Jay that's done of the existing structure, have this, we have this prefab quote and then we could have Anthony draw up something as well and then we could see what the three are and then make a decision from that, but I'd like to hear what the board thinks of that.
I don't think we're interested at this point in pursuing a new building entirely.
I just don't know if we would like to just see it. I mean, we might just outright say no way, but then at least we would see how much that would be, at least for comparison.
I don't think anybody's going to draw up plans for you for nothing.
Okay, so, I hear what you're saying, that we'd have to pay, but are we, would we'd like to put down the cost on the existing, to build off the existing? To get plans for that, we'd have to pay for that too. What does, what does the board prefer?
Is it makes more sense to find one versus going to each of these people to find one to go with for the plans if we're not going to be, if, they have to draw up the plans and it's not just like a draft?
Right.
So that they, they're basically their finalized plans and to get three of those would be a lot of money for... But I'm just wondering, is there any, do they do anything like with a, like a, like a light proposal or a draft plan that, not a full-on plan, but just something that we could look at from each of them?
Jay has done stuff for us before, hasn't he? Did he do something to do with the window painting or cocking here a little while ago? He was in here talking.
He was on the Energy Committee. He resigned from the Energy Committee afterwards, he wasn't happy with us, so.
So, what, what do people want to do? Do we want to ask anyone to?
I would, I would suggest that we approach Otter Valley Engineering in the N, NAB.
Right, MFB?
Yeah. Where Jay works.
That's where Jay works, yes.
Ask them if they'd be willing to do a site visit and give us an estimate on what it would cost to do it, the design. We could explain to them that we want to extend this there, possibly do some repair and the trusses and stuff in the existing shed and...
And just give us something, a, a better baseline to try to make a decision from because right now it seems like we're just, we're still very much in the early stages.
And then the other option is to just go with this, Clearspan is a prefab, so it would give us a prefabricated building. That's what other towns around us are doing. So I don't think we need to get an estimate on this, we already have the estimate of what it would be for something like this.
But that would have been two years ago, or how many years ago was this?
Um, let's see, is there a date?
I couldn't find a date on it, so that was...
It's twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Three thirty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, there it is, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So it's recent?
I would wonder about the longevity of a, because especially because it's fabric and I imagine it's just a hoop, a metal hoop and then fabric, the tough fabric on top.
I heard ten years.
Ten years.
I know that's true.
And Otter Valley actually did the site work on this and might be able to give us some more information if we're contacting them for an estimate on the other.
I would think we could wait on that until we hear back from the...
Sounds good.
The other two folks on what we're thinking of going, is feasible.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
The one thing that strikes me about this whole thing is the price on this, it's a quarter of a million dollars.
Right.
Right.
On the Clearspan?
Yeah. I have no idea that we were going to get into that kind of money.
That's not, that's not the foundation to it either, that's just the root.
This is just the hoop.
I don't know how big that is.
And it's three months old.
This price is only for the hoop, this is not for anything else.
You can add another...
The stuff of getting it in the ground.
Who has it, has it relation on?
And how much it costs now?
Yeah.
I think that the other two probably will give us something better than, that scares the heck out of me.
Well, you asked for information, I got your information.
Do we like the information?
No, we don't like it. That's the information I got, so.
Let us know when you get the back.
Yes, I will. Yes, he's stuck in Virginia.
That's not a bad...
He didn't sound too upset.
We've got a topic here of line striping. We realize we can't do crosswalks on the, the state park. Sandy had mentioned possibly, well, not just Sandy, a couple of people mentioned looking at somebody that would do some striping. I don't know if you know Chris Bendig or not.
I do.
He did some, some striping for us a number of years ago. I don't know if he's still in the business. I remember Charlie Wade used to work with him when he was alive. We've got a number of ideas of places we'd like to do, you know, over by the bridge over there, probably Florence Avenue, the stop line there, possibly the stop line at the fire station, maybe Yale coming this way up around... possibly the stop line at the fire station, maybe coming this way up around Depot Street. People obviously running across Railroad Street. We've been lucky, we've never had a serious act on us there. Unfortunately, I see it as a matter of time. One of the ones I'd really like to see is some kind of a line delineating the actual westbound lane down here at the end of Depot Street. If you sit there and watch for a while, probably three out of four cars will almost touch the curb on the eastbound side of the highway, completely in the wrong lane. I know they make, they can do arcs with the, I don't know if the highway guy would say that that's a good idea or not. Sandy, I think you came up with a company in Bennington, is it?
Yeah. This Green Mountain line is jacking out of Bennington. He says he'd give us, he'd come up and give us a free estimate.
I was wondering if we could just price it down, try to do that. Maybe Sandy and I can sit down one day and come up with areas that should probably be looked at.
Yeah, I would imagine also, like, on top of that, because I know some of the fire highways in town have a block off. But like, like, around here on School Street, right here in front of the school, like, that one doesn't. So just, if there's, if that would be something?
Is that considered state highway?
That would be state highway. You're right. Never mind that. And then I wouldn't, for the, we're talking about the no parking zone, that's also state highway, so we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, they could take a look at that.
Well, we, we actually are chartered parking on seven, so we could do, we, we put up with no parking signs and things like that.
Okay.
So we could do the line striping.
Yeah. Like I said, yeah, making sure that that's visible.
Yeah. Yep.
Better to give the footage and everything on that? Well, they could come up with a free estimate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, Steve, do we have any pedestrian crossing signs down the garage? So if we get the couple of crosswalks painted?
No, we don't have anything like that. All we got is just no parking. We got a couple of no parking.
Have we ever done the, I know it's, I know we have a crosswalk on it, but have we ever done the, like, at the corner of 140 and seven, ever have, like, the flag stations? Where you have, like, a box, where you can grab a flag, walk across, and then put it back in on the other side, just as a...
We've never had that.
I've always liked those. I thought those were, yeah, they're really, yeah. But that might, just something, if we're thinking, even when we're thinking about the ones we talked about, by Florence, and then down by Cumbes, like, having something, especially in those spots where there's not a traffic light, something like that might be cheaper than having a whole white with a solar panel and everything else that's flashing.
I would be conscious putting, putting up those signs, particularly in the area of Cumberland Farms, that's going to encourage people to cross the road there, and thereby park on the wrong side, and that's all no parking in there.
Yeah, that's tough.
And from what Sandy found out before, when we were looking into crosswalks across seven, you can't put a crosswalk there at Cumberland Farms because there's no sidewalk on the other side. So I think it's opening a whole can of worms to put any, to have anything there.
Yeah. Then maybe one...
Further.
Maybe this is also, again, we'd have to contact the state for this particular, because it's not the park, but the crosswalk, we have to get them to do, right?
Exactly.
So maybe it's more on, like, a hull across there, because then it's with, near the post office.
Right.
And then over to, like, the Maple Leaf Center. Because it's, it's a decent amount of walking to get, to get back to the corner if you're walking around.
That's true.
Bill? Only one thing I have left, is that a gentleman on Hartsborough Road, I talked to Sandy earlier about it. He wanted to know what it would take from roughly Mike Frederick's house at the top of the hill, till you get to Icebed Turn, and turn down Hartsborough Road. That intersection, be marked at 25 miles an hour. He liked the speed limit change there.
So that's that weird kind of...
Yeah. It's a line, you can't see there.
Yeah.
One of the driveways, it's a line. I don't know if you need to do a study on it. I was talking to Sandy about it. I don't know anything about that.
What is the speed limit there?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five. Most of that is coming from Hartsborough down into the sag and up around that corner. That's, and they, and they don't stop.
No.
And that barn is right near the next road, too.
Yeah.
I have the same problem on Dawson's way out at the end.
Oh, yes.
Where it narrows really close, sometimes they come around through the school tree. I have the same problem there. They just wake too fast, they all come out of the tree.
I used to live off Dawson, so...
Well...
Yeah. Yeah, I know of what you speak there, yeah.
He wants a change on the Icebed Park, or on the...
There are three ways.
No way.
He wants it so you can slow that intersection down.
I tell you right now, the Agency of Transportation frowned on putting an intermittent speed limit sign. That was why South Main Street became forty, or thirty-five, rather. They went from thirty to forty. And that was from, I think, Turb Street down. And the state came in and made it all one speed limit, because they didn't want that intermittent section. They would, which really frowned on going from thirty-five to twenty-five.
On the dirt road, on a blank road, change... He was just asking.
Would it be worth it more to have a stop sign? I know, I don't know what, how terrible that is.
If it just slowed down so they wouldn't be quite as fast in that corner.
Does the sheriff have to sit there for a few times?
You might find that sign on that turn, though.
No.
I don't think you're going to get, it might slow down a few people that time, but...
Right.
I mean, I'd be doing thirty-five through that corner anyway.
Are there signs that say blind intersection or, or dangerous intersection or low threshold or anything, just like that?
And we have to teach people to read. I think I got a phone call on 40 when I fixed the big culprit up there.
Yeah.
They kept stopping and saying, my sign was tipped on right there. I said, well, at least you saw it.
You saw money left on your sign budget by June 30th. We can get a couple of these signs from you later.
Well, we got to do a little bit about wanting to change the ordinance, is there?
I don't know. I have never seen, in the years that I did speed control, I've never seen dropping five or 10 miles an hour really be effective. Clarendon dropped the section from around the Victors, from thirty-five to twenty-five. And all that did was open up a potential for a real ticket boom. Because nobody slows down twenty-five.
No.
If you said everybody's told thirty-five, or, or more.
Right.
I don't see this counter change, nobody moving. Anything else, Phil?
Oh, I think that's it for me.
Public commentary.
Thank you.
Is anybody here for anything that isn't on the agenda? Seeing none. We have a letter for the grants and aid intent. We've been in this for what, two, three years now?
Yeah.
Basically, all we do on this is just sign off on it, right?
Right. It's 25,000, that's net for this round. So this will be a big project.
Can I get a motion, a second, for the board to sign off?
I make a motion?
Yes, second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The Mill River School Board vacancy. We have two names that have been brought to us. One is Mr. Carl Ross and Mr. Nick Landers. I see you're here, and Carl's here. Is there anything either of you would like to say? I'll ask you first.
I'd like to present to the, to the letter there. I did run for the board seat earlier this year. Was ever so close.
Grace really took second.
I am still interested in obtaining that seat, if it's available. I do have eight nieces and nephews that attend the Mill River district, and three students of my own that do attend Mill River. I graduated from Mill River, and I graduated from the K C, recently moved to Flummford in 2018. Happy to answer questions, et cetera.
I know, I was impressed during the...
Well, the Rotary...
Yeah, the Rotary, uh...
Q and A?
Yeah, the Q and A. I thought you had really good answers and really, well, maybe, yeah, maybe different opinions than what I would have, who still seemed to be very passionate about it. So I, I was, I was sad that you were, in, in some ways, that you were, I wish you were going for the other role, the other, so I was, but...
Any take on, sir? Carl?
Uh, I have been on the board before for a couple of years, prior to Act 46. And I think that what I would bring to the board is the experience, the ability to start immediately. And I wouldn't need the training or anything else. I had two children, went through the system. I've been here for 12 years. I know the school board business. I was pre-Act 46, but I was on the RSSU board for several years in addition to being on Mill River elected from here. So I think I would bring that immediately to the board. I think my tenure experience, I always thought the classroom came first, that the teacher and the student in the classroom is where it's all about. And that's when I tried to make the budget. I was on the finance, I was chair of the finance committee for five years. And I tried to make sure that the finances went to that relationship, and not to some, and then admin, and some other things. And I was pretty cheap, other than the classroom experience. And I'd like to take that back to the board. Now, my kids are born, so I have enough time to devote a lot to that, and it does take a lot of time. And I think Ms. Hawkins' letter describing what a school board member needs to do, although you guys know what it takes to here, it's a lot of time and a lot of effort, and I'm willing to put in that time and effort.
I don't know that we have a clear-cut procedure. Over the years, I've tried to stay pretty much out of anything to do with Mill River. We can probably either poll each member of the board, which is what I would prefer to do. The hard part of that is, unfortunately, with the two gentlemen here, hopefully, there won't be hard feelings on any part. Is that what the board would be willing to do?
Yep.
Okay.
Ours is just a recommendation anyways. It's not like it's a final, our decision isn't what the school board needs to go with.
Yeah.
Yeah. Justin?
I, I think just because of what I saw during the Rotary thing, I would nominate Nick, Nick Landers.
I know Nick. I think Nick would do a great job. I also know Carl. Carl has the experience. I think fitting in this temporary role, I happen to be boots-wearing, I would go with
I can have reference to both of them. Looking at the letters, you're both highly qualified. However, unfortunately, I, I too have to look at Carl, having known him for many years and his past experience.
And just because of this particular, because it's...
Tulsa?
Right. I think you're very well qualified.
I, I agree. I think you're both qualified. The last time we made, made an appointment, though, I took some flak from people in town for not supporting the runoff candidate, so my vote would be for Nick.
Um, my vote is for Nick. I think because he stepped up in March and was, put his name on the ballot. He only lost by less than 20 points when he was against somebody, and the other person that was running by themselves barely got two-thirds of the votes, and there was a number of write-in candidates, and I know they were for Nick, if they, he would, he would have won, if the write-in candidates did it that way. So I think our town supports Nick. But you are both, I mean, great candidates, and...
I'm sure that you made my wife very...
As a wife of the person stepping down, I guess.
I, I, in 2005, they took away the ability in the town to actually appoint a school board member, and I was very offended by that. I think that, you know, you're going to represent Wallington, and so I think Wallington ought to be the people voting, and at this point, you're Wallington. And I would certainly tell the school board that I don't want to play anymore. You are endorsed by the select board, and therefore you should be a candidate, and you should be on board.
Thank you.
And I totally agree with that.
If I could just say, I, I would encourage you to run at the right for the next election, Mr. Allen.
Yes.
Because I, I certainly believe you're very qualified.
He'll be one.
There'll be...
He's not running for the chair.
But, but won't there be, there may be more than one candidate, so keep an eye open. Yeah, because there's four, so it's time for two.
Yeah, check him away for a straight...
Yeah, there's, there should be two in March. There we go.
Well, thank you both.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Maybe congratulations.
Exactly.
That's not waiting for that to mean.
Sorry, Tonya.
That's true.
Alrighty. I got the same email as you did, Jim, on the hot weather. I don't know if anybody else on the board is aware of it. So if you'd like to, just go ahead with it.
Sure. Basically, the town received a piece of communication from emergency planning, or regional planning commission, and suggesting that the town consider adding a hot weather heat plan to the tanks that are existing, emergency management plan that we had, I guess, adopted in May. The letter was really kind of brief, as Nelson said there. It's, it posed a lot of questions and stuff. And I met with, with Stephanie Bauer, our emergency management guy that's going to be down here Friday, and asked them what the state expectations were, what their assistance level would be, and things. They basically said that what they're trying to do is develop something that's reasonable and practical for the town. It's, it's really not going to follow anything considerably in terms of any expense or supplies or anything. It's, it's basically detailing and fine-tuning our existing plan, so it wouldn't be anything that I don't think would be overwhelming. The expectations would be, basically, only that we provide some kind of hydration water, and it's not meant to be an overnight shelter. In our emergency medical plan now, we've got down the, the school and the lodges as the two, two shelters now. Whether that would work or not, really remains to be seen. One of the other things, it's not meant to be a gathering place for in warm weather or anything. It's basically an emergency shelter that would be triggered by either a communication from the National Weather Service or the... You know, in reality, I really question if we'd get a lot of use out of it. I think, hopefully, it would not have to be used. But I think in the event that there was a significant heat exposure here and we've got a fairly vulnerable population, a number of people in town, I think it'd be worth the effort to at least consider it.
I think especially as summers have gotten hotter, especially and also spiked very quickly hotter. I remember, yeah, I think it's a good idea. I would question the lodge, because I remember going to look at that when I was looking for a wedding, when we got it for a wedding and in the middle of the summer, and that was hot inside. Because there's no, I mean, it's a big, big old wooden, basically, container. So I don't know if we'd want to put that, especially also it's far. So if anybody could actually transport themselves over there, that'd be really different. But I feel like...
That's true.
Yeah. I was sweating just walking around.
That's where I had my wedding.
That's where we had ours.
No, I think all the, that Stephanie is really looking for now is to be part of the pilot program. There are two communities being chosen or selected at this point in our approach. And we're one of them. You know, she basically like the template. Worked with us on the wording and expectations and recommendations there. And it'd be something that we could present to you guys, and then you could have a final say on it.
And looking at this real quick. The lake over there, you've named one or two places. Justin has a good point about the facility over at the lake. I don't think, I have not seen anything in this program yet related to funding. You know, as for air conditioning, fans or anything along that line. So I think right now, any kind of a place you're looking at needs either already be cooled to an extent or most of these places that are named other than Town Hall would require partnering with some organization, charity, whatever it might be, including the elementary. I don't believe that during the summertime that they would be doing air conditioning over there. I think the school district will be looking at that as a added expense or certainly an increase in expense.
The elementary school?
Yeah.
That's one of the shelter places?
Right now, we have, the elementary school is a primary shelter and the lodge is a backup.
The problem with the elementary school is exactly what Nelson was saying. I worked in that building for twenty-five years. And if you have hot days in June, it is pretty darn hot in that building.
Yeah.
So unless there was going to be some sort of funding for retrofitting or something.
I do think there might be a possibility with Rotary building or the library. So I think in general, it is worth discussing with them. Particularly if funding becomes available to provide a generator, some kind of a cooling system, even if it's only a fan system. Also, I think Rotary building is fairly reasonable during the summertime. But I think we really need to limit the areas that we're looking at. But my thought would be it'd be okay to go ahead and at least look to see if we have any kind of a facility that would accommodate it.
Do we have any thoughts on places that could work in East and South Wallingford? Or does this not carry on this? Or is it just for the...
Any question?
Is this just for the village?
No, no, it's a town, it's a town shelter.
Is that, again, just that idea of transportation in that situation?
Well, that did come up. And in some cooling shelter scenarios, it is considered. But they said that they probably wouldn't, considering the locale and everything, provide transportation or advanced, you know, medical type things for, you know, the more vulnerable populations.
So I wonder if they're, I don't know of anything in East Wallingford, but the only thing I can think of would be the church in South Wallingford.
And same with East Wallingford, really be the church. With the exception of the auction hall that's used there by the old sewards.
Yes.
Okay.
What is it, Oddfell? I drive by it every day, and I've lived there forever. Can't think of the name right now.
It's not the same.
No, it's the, but yes, that building.
So maybe that would be something also, just asking, like, because we have a pretty large geographic town, like, if there is any possibility for multiple locations.
It's got the Masons M.
I think the thing is, the municipalities that has to be part of this have indicated that there's ever been a use of or a request for.
I remember like when I was working in Rutland a couple of summers ago, that was, they had many cooling stations that they were putting up. So it's something that definitely happens.
Well, if you look at major cities, they try and put a building center within fifteen minutes walking.
Right.
That's obviously not a possibility.
No, it's not a possibility for Vermont anywhere, except for maybe, yeah. I wonder also if there's, it just, it curious on this last, last thing I'll say is that those cooling tents that you can have where it has misters on the sides and you kind of walk in and then you can cool down. So just, just as something that would have, that would maybe expand where we could put it if we...
Well, there are support facilities that I guess that they're talking about that are available through Red Cross.
Okay.
Some other social service agencies, too.
Okay.
The issue is that there probably would be a demand in other places just as much as there is here.
For sure.
I do think we should support moving ahead with it, though.
Definitely.
Is there anything we need for you, a letter of support or anything?
No, I don't think that she's going to make a big deal out of this or anything. There's no endorsement to make. The only thing she said is that there is a, we're working against time here because we're almost getting into the time. If something was available, it might be available.
Our word is... Okay, thank you, Jim. A letter of support on the sidewalk grant. Again, very well written. We do need, if everybody is in agreement with it, we do need a motion and a second to sign off on it.
I make a motion that we sign the letter?
I'll second.
And do a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The summer rec program. You have an application. Did anybody have anything to say on it or... Sandy, I'm assuming it's okay with you?
Yeah. Yeah, Lisa and Lori are happy.
She works at Proctor's, so she must know, Lisa.
Are we in agreement to go ahead with this one? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Consensus?
Do you want to set a wage? We don't have to come back for it?
Unlicensed dogs. We have a dog letter that's basically is an annual every, every year.
Nelson? I think Sandy said we need to...
Set a wage.
Set a wage for the position.
Oh, I thought you said go ahead.
Well, by consensus, we'll hire, what hourly rate?
Oh, okay. I had written down suggesting fifteen seventy-five.
Is that what the person she's replacing is saying?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Yep. Again, consensus.
Especially with her experience as a parent educator. I feel like that's a, that's a good fit to have that wage.
As I started to say, dog letters come out every year. We're already more than a month overdue. Are we all in agreement to sign the letter?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Consensus again. Meeting date for the second meeting. My suggestion of this is that we look at June seventeenth. That's a Friday. I don't know if there'll be pushback from everybody on the board as to it being a Friday. But my thought is I'd like to get this in while Sandy is still here. The seventeenth would leave us still in June for a final meeting where we can look at the budget, profit and loss, and anything that needs to be corrected in this year can be brought into line. I don't know if there's going to be any surpluses that they're going to have to use up or whatever, but that date will give us time to look at it.
Looks like we're in real good shape right now.
Yeah.
Friday, new week.
Is that agreeable with everybody?
Okay.
June seventeenth?
On that, so on that Friday, is it okay if we met earlier? Is everybody able to meet earlier that day?
Yeah, could we meet earlier that day?
Sure, I don't see why not.
Can you make that?
How early?
How early? I just have, I have something at seven.
How, how early could we meet on?
I don't get out of work till four-thirty or five. Four-thirty to five in Rutland.
I, I'm in in-service at that point, so I could meet basically right after school if five o'clock works for people.
What time is that?
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty?
Time looks better for you.
I mean, I can try to get here for five. I'm supposed to get out of work at four-thirty?
Do we want to see five or five-thirty?
I mean, I should be fine.
Five or five-thirty?
We can do five.
Five?
I just might be a few minutes late. If I get stuck in traffic, I'll message you.
Okay, we'll get a ticket on the way.
Seventeenth at five?
So seventeenth at five. Oh, and then do we need to talk about July? Do, are, are we okay meeting on July Tuesday, the fifth?
I'm pretty much good twenty-four, seven, anytime.
The fifth works for me.
That's the only perk of being retired.
Yeah, the fifth is fine for me.
Is everybody good at that, on the July fifth?
Yes, I leave the sixth. Same time?
Yeah.
Six-thirty?
Yeah. I'm fine with the regular time for that.
Six-thirty, okay.
Select board comments.
I... Would you like to go first, Carol?
Had some questions about the parade and the rec committee. I know there was an issue with the, I don't know who did the planning of, and who was supposed to stop traffic, because there was an issue where traffic was not stopped at the other end. The parade started, a tanker truck got through. My husband then noticed and started directing traffic down Florence because the parade was already past the four-way intersection at that point. So he was, happened to be there assisting with the parade and started directing the traffic. So I wasn't sure who coordinated that, who was supposed to be there. He saw a sheriff go by afterwards and stopped.
The American Legion, they were the ones that actually do all of the planning and execution of the parade. We just confirmed that they would be available and that, I think Brian reached out for the band. As far as our direct involvement at the parade was just to make sure the American Legion was running it.
Because I know previously it was the rec committee that did help do that, assisted in planning.
Yeah.
Only a few short years ago.
Yeah.
And also, there was nobody there to help organize the lineup. The band director, who had, what, sixty-some kids of his own, was given a list and was pretty much put in charge of lining people up.
Oh, boy.
Which he would, did not complain about. I just know that happened, and I know he already had his hands full. So the organization of the parade may need some tweaking for next year.
Do you have copies of organization from the past that we can get our hands on?
I do not, but I wonder...
Yeah, I gave it, I gave it.
Yeah, we have it from the American Legion of how everything is organized.
So it seems the two things that we're lacking this year was the parade lineup and the traffic control.
Yeah.
I mean, he was very happy there was actually a printed lineup this year, unlike previous years, but there was nobody there to help. In past years, there's normally somebody there to say, this is what we're doing. You line, time to line up. And there was no man on deck helping organize anything.
So more coordination with the American Legion really is...
It was rec committee members before.
Yeah.
And then my question is with the siding on the basketball court. It does, it has not been done yet. Do we have a time frame?
He said he was going to get it done before June thirtieth.
Okay.
Exchanged emails, moved F P S.
No problem. I just, I know we've talked about that of it being completed, and it has not been completed yet.
So you get it done before June thirtieth.
The basketball season is in full swing.
Right, same with the tennis court. That's supposed to be done before January as well.
Okay, thank you.
Is that pump, is that right next to the basketball? Is that functional? Because I tried, I was there with Lucy the other day, and it's just kind of broken completely. It doesn't do any pressure.
That pump is not working.
No.
Okay.
The water?
Yeah, like the little blue one.
No.
It like, it looks like the, somehow the little part pulled off.
Yeah, that's been out for years.
Yes. Is there a way to get water to that area?
Well, the short answer is?
No.
The rec committee has looked into the past into getting water out that way.
Several times.
There's, there's issues with water mains right underneath the field, which should not be touched. And the town water supply can't have anything hooked into it. That's not, the fire district will not allow it. So I would go with that answer of no.
Under the others, the only one I had anything on was I was curious on Justin's science fiction movies.
So that'd be my dad's. That's this.
That's what you're... Personally, I think it's a great idea. I didn't see in the paperwork we have, is there going to be any admission fee or...
No admission fees.
Donations or...
It's not a commercial event, so we're not going to be charging anything and...
Yeah. How about the donations, any?
You know, that gets a little sticky when you get into showing a movie and then trying to get donations or anything. I just want to stay away from it and make it a fun night. And because from what I've read on, and I've read on this a lot, we're going to be getting the movies off of YouTube. So I'm going directly, I'm going to be showing the movies from YouTube website. If I do anything where I go outside of the YouTube website, that creates copyright issues. And I don't want to make it any kind of a commercial event because that's when you start getting to that very sticky subject of copyrights. So it's just come have fun, a silly night, and then at the end of the movie, we have a trivia, or maybe we'll do it beforehand, I don't know. But we'll have some kind of trivia stuff, just a nutty, bad movies from the fifties and sixties that I grew up with on Saturday afternoons.
Have you thought about doing a potluck? I don't know, I haven't asked you this before.
What, what?
A potluck for people to bring snacks, like, that they could do.
Then you have to make sure that you get volunteers to clean up and all that.
No.
You know what I mean? It's a big schmish. First, I want to see how many people show up.
First, I want to see how many people show up.
That's a good call.
You know, I'm very ambitious, I'd love to do it every week, but I have a feeling my ambition is the highest attempt.
So one thing that you could do, which we did back when we had music, different bands here every month, different organizations were allowed to come in and do a bake sale for a fundraiser.
Concession?
Yeah, concession, yeah, we could do that, that.
And, but just, I do know, at least when...
I think Sandy was the main contributor to those most of the time.
And I think I was here half the one time selling. But on the showing of a movie, because I know with schools, they have to pay, right, even though you're not paying and charging, there's a certain, I know we had to go through this for the PTO, so I don't know if it's just because it was an educational setting, but there was another little, like, fee that was, had to be paid to be able to show it as a, as a group.
Yeah, not if you're originating from a YouTube channel.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because that was something we had to go through, because when we did movie nights.
And luckily, a lot of these videos have, videos, original movies have now gone into public domain, so we won't have that issue.
So when you get into public domain movies?
So no Netflix, Hulu, it's got to be just from YouTube free.
Exactly, because that all does have like that copyright on it.
Yeah.
But...
But if you're doing them all from YouTube, then it's fine.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
We shouldn't have a problem if we do, I'll be absolutely fascinated to talk to the person that squeals on us for something.
You never know.
This is the biggest issue in the world, yeah.
You never know.
But I, I think so. It's just crazy, but I think we'll be okay, I'm going to try and do mostly public domain. But it'll all be based on the YouTube platform, so I won't go outside of that. And it's an hour and a half, and...
It'll be great.
Yeah, let's see.
And if you want people to sell popcorn, let me know.
I have at least two.
I, I have 20-some years of movie experience, and I have a movie theater popcorn machine at home. Movies are dear to my heart.
We'll have to appoint somebody as an usher, because I grew up in the days of lady ushers and stuff. God forbid you were not sitting in the children's section, she'd come with her flashlight.
I love doing that.
You're the usher.
Going down, get out of there, behave.
Are we all good on that?
I think so.
Do we need to go to...
Yeah, we need... We can use your downstairs executive.
Can you, would you be able to step out? Okay. It's not going to take you long.
All right.
We need a motion and a second, come on, executive.
Make a motion?
Paul Taylor?
Aye.
Aye. We're back on the record. After consulting in executive session, we've decided that we need a little more guidance on this, and we are going to be seeking further direction on any further steps that we take from a council, probably with the LCT. And we will keep you up to date on what would you decide. Do we need a motion and a second for adjournment?
Make a motion? Is that good?
Oh, in favor of adjournment.
All right.
It's not a competition. Thank you. Everything is.